Too sexy for my love, too sexy for my love, love's going to leak.
Welcome to the Lake Forest Podcast, podcast of the lovely city of Lake Forest, featuring topics like local news, sports, music, people, food, and artificial turf. My name is Pete and I'm Joe with the voice of Lake Forest High School Basketball, Football, Lacrosse, Chess, T Water Pool, Scoo. Lake Forest Podcast is supported by viewers and listeners just like you. Shark Guy Beach Fishing is a premier South Florida beach fishing experience out along Bokey, Florida. Their world renowned captains not only put you on the fish, but to help you and your family make a memory of a lifetime. Check them out on Facebook or at SharkGuyBeachFishing.com to schedule an outing. Shark Guy is your guy for your next charter. We'd also like to say we're thankful for our patron supporters, Reverend Luke Bapp, Cardinal Church of the Holy Spirit, Matt A, Elizabeth C, Coastal Lance Otto, RDM, Johnny C. We'd like to thank the Breakfast Club of Lake Forest, Captain Mikes in Kenosha, Wisconsin, The Brat Stop in Kenosha, Wisconsin as well, The Frolic Lounge in Wahegan, Illinois, and then The Greentown Tavern in Wahegan. Walker, how you doing Scoo?
Wow, doing good Pete, how are you? How was the weekend?
Oh man, it was busy. It was very busy. Congrats to the scouts, huh? First win?
Yeah, scouts had their first win. Blowout as, as expected.
Thirty-four zip?
Forty-eight zip.
Forty-eight zip?
Yes.
Wow.
Running clock and it was, it was, I mean, I think the freshmen probably could have beat them.
Wahegan, that's a big town, isn't it?
Yeah, but I think the problem is all the, all the athletes have been going to Warren. I don't know how, I think they opened up the borders up underneath. They're just gobbling up all, you know, the area kids. And ironically, yeah, Wahegan should be, is big. Wahegan should have a very competitive all sports, but they just seem to fuck them out of there and they're playing at Warren.
I was always wondering about that. And then this week homecoming.
Homecoming, yeah.
Lot of, lot of paint on the windows in town. With the exception of one certain business.
There should be more.
Why isn't there more?
It's just the disconnect between the city and the high school and school spirit wise and all that. I mean.
Yeah, what's the deal?
If, if, if those windows aren't painted, you'd never know it was homecoming. And it's the biggest time of year for the high school and it's just, you know, they should still have the parade, they should still have floats, all the stuff they used to have.
Help, help the newcomers out like me. When, when did the parade stop?
Oh, years ago. I mean, but no one's wanted to resurrect it and no one really, you know, gives, I know they have, I still think they still have the, their pep rally and all that, but it's very, you know, too many opportunities for hooliganism.
What? What are the losers back in town?
No, it's just, it's just.
Like how long ago? Ten years ago? Fifteen, twenty, thirty?
I don't know, I don't know. It just, you know, there's just not, there's just a, a big disconnect, but you go to other towns like Libertyville and, you know, Mondelinales and you also their town and you know they have a high school and you know they have school spirit and it's because it's interwoven throughout the community. Lake Forest, it's not. But what, what can you do?
What, why is it that way? Any idea?
No, just, I, I.
We don't want to spend the money, resources?
No, why does, why does everyone come to the games and leave?
Or not come to the game at all?
Apathy, you know?
Yeah.
It's not a, I just, I think the community justice, the, you know, I don't really care, you know, unless my kids are involved, then that's too bad.
Now, when you were growing up.
It's a shame. Biggest time of the year.
Yeah. Well, I guess there's more choices now, I guess. Trying to make excuses here, I, I don't know.
Like what? School spirit, what are different choices?
Netflix?
Come on Pete.
Sort of out there.
There's no, there's no alternate choices to having school spirit and supporting your team and all that.
All right, then.
Not only team, but school and all that.
Well, answer me this Scoo, as I'm walking around town and I see the beautiful paint, there's one business that doesn't have any paint on its windows and I'm just.
Which one?
It's right below the lantern, I can't think of.
I know, I was talking to the varsity basketball coach who was doing the window above me. I said, why you guys throw something down there? That thought, you know, thought he was going to and he didn't.
Can we just put Lake Forest Podcast on?
Sure, come paint it. I mean, it, it just, it just, you know, it, it, that's the whole thing. I mean, it's just, I don't know. You know, why, why aren't all the windows in Market Square like they used to be? The class, each class used to do it and different teams, but there's only a few select windows. I mean, I'll give you an example, I think Sweets used to always have something on there, nothing this year. They got a new store across the street, nothing. Well, I mean, is it just a hassle of having kids in front of your store?
Yeah.
You know, showing.
Stay off my lawn.
Community and school spirit, I don't know.
But I mean, she's cool, I don't think.
I know.
She's cool, like what?
Maybe they weren't approached, maybe.
Is it the boosters? Is it like?
Cause I don't know. It, you know, it could be a lack of, or apathy within the student body, it could be lack or apathy of the businesses, I don't know, but it's just not.
Huh.
Apathy of the city, I don't know.
Well, I hate pointing fingers, but how did we, we had a magic wand, how do we, is there any way to like fix it or we just don't want?
There's a lot of ways to fix it. You can, you can still have the homecoming parade come through town like it used to do in the past. I mean, they start at the high school and come all the way down Western Avenue, turn and then go back up McKinley and to the school. You know, you, they used to on homecoming, the senior class would paint the viaduct wall over by Gordon. That hasn't been done in, you know, three, four years. But I, I just, you know, I, I think there's apathy amongst everyone, which is sad. I'm not pointing a finger at anyone, I'm doing it on everyone.
I mean, is it a safety thing for the parades? You know, the Highland Park thing, is that?
Oh, come on, now that's.
But I mean, there wasn't a parade two years ago, so.
We're gonna pray for years, it has nothing to do with Highland Park.
Alright.
Excuses are not what, you know, it was okay one time to do it for years and years and years and now all of a sudden, you know, you know, it hasn't been done for years, but you know, why not?
Money?
Too many people take.
I don't know, you gotta pay the cops.
Oh, come on. How difficult is it to, to have your classmates walk through town with the band and, you know, if you don't want to have floats, don't have floats, but how, how difficult is it to show that school spirit having a parade? Don't know.
So it's, the superintendent?
Oh Pete, come on, you're looking for people to point fingers at, it's a lack of apathy in this town, everyone.
Okay.
It can be easily done, it can be easily done. No one wants to do it. Booster should be doing it. The high school should be sponsoring and doing it. The high school should work with the city to do it, you know, and work around all these, whatever issues they may be. The school board should be doing it and, and, you know, it's, it's a whole bunch of people.
So the school board meeting, I would just go up and I'd just say, hey man, why don't we have more involvement in, in homecoming? You get what, three minutes or something like, where you can talk? I'm sure they'd love to hear from me.
What's the school board do? They're gonna go, I don't know, we've never had, haven't had it, you know, in years, why redo it?
I'm just asking, why don't, why don't?
That's apathy.
Alright.
Everyone takes no for an answer and then everyone, you know, goes to the school board and everyone thinks, oh, how's the school board? Whatever they say must be, you know, no, okay. It comes from the students, the students, the boosters, if they want to do it, they need to work with the city and do it. And, you know, ten minutes of a parade going through town celebrating homecoming, showing school spirit, showing community spirit, that's, that's what it's all about. Don't, like I said, go to neighboring communities, go through Libertyville, you know, school's in. They got signs up, they got, you know, everything. It, it's just, it's, it's, it's just lack of, you know, willingness to support.
Obviously there's some support, but it's like half-assed support, right? Well, some of the windows are painted, if nobody cared, there wouldn't be any paint.
That's because they go to the, the businesses and the business say, yeah. But why, why aren't there, why isn't every business saying, come do, you know, put flags up in town? They'll put the flags in town, you know, probably, I hope they will.
The small businesses are worried about getting.
They should be, they should be done all during the week, it's homecoming week, there's events all week.
Yeah.
They get, they get the biggest day of the, every high school year is homecoming. You know, they're trying to school, the boosters are trying to rejuvenate this whole, you know, all-class reunion type of thing and, you know, they're making great effort at it, but everyone's gotta participate, you know, including the city. If the city doesn't want to do it, you know, it's a big, big issue.
I mean, is it a parking wrecks thing? Is it city manager thing? Is it special events? Is there a special events person?
It's the city and the schools getting together and just, let's do it.
When you say the city, is it the alderman? Is it Jason?
You're trying to, Pete, it, it's the city, you don't have to get one individual person, it's the city.
Well, if nobody takes.
I know, you keep, you want, I just said it.
It's the city, okay, that's, that right there is why nothing's happening, because there's no ownership.
Oh, no, 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 that's not, don't ever say that's the reason, my, my statement's the reason why, absolutely not.
Well, no, it's, there's, who are we pointing the finger at?
I'm not pointing the finger at anyone, I'm pointing, I'm not pointing the finger Pete at anyone. I know you want me to point a finger, but it's not, it's the city and the school. Whoever you want to include in that, I'm.
Maybe we, we want it.
City of Lake Forest, period.
Okay.
And the schools need to work together to get more school spirit.
Okay. So we need a spirit, spirit chief?
No. Why is it that you have to take everything to the next level and, you know, we gotta blame somebody?
I'm not blaming it, I want to fix it. It's if we want, look, if we real, if, if the town really wanted it, it would happen, I guess the town doesn't want it, so that's fair enough, could be.
I don't know.
Okay. You know, you know what the town does want? What was kind of amazing is, I finally got a chance to watch the city council meeting from last week. That is the first time that I've watched.
You've watched one?
No, it's the first time where I've seen kind of the alderman like get on the same page.
My comment earlier, I think the nine-five is the best fit for the usage by our community.
So are you generally supportive of them continuing on the path that's on the board, on the board here?
It makes more sense to do nine-five and seven-six.
Quick and to the point, I'm strongly in favor of the nine-point-five acres.
So thank you. I also think nine-five is the best option for all the reasons enumerated.
I would also go with the nine-and-a-half acre configuration.
Just to clarify your position, you're okay, okay, well, and the rest, I mean.
It's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Fully support nine-and-a-half acres. Again, I fully support nine-and-a-half acres.
Thank you.
That the nine-and-a-half acres is the right one and I think that's the way to go, so.
So I'm coming into this new and I'm fine with the nine-and-a-half acre.
Well, thank you, that's a pretty clear direction, I think, about as clear as I've ever heard, so without, without an official vote, so. I'll add to what everybody else has said briefly, if you look at the roster of the people and the backgrounds of the people that were on, and hopefully will still be on the advisory board or advisory committee, because I, I too would like to see the conceptual vision plan, you know, the long-range concept plan updated for some of the, you know, as new information becomes available. It's an extraordinary collection of people who are real, real experts in some critical aspect of this, every one of them, and they all donate their time, they all work together with a very large group of very capable and experienced city staff and, and a very strong consulting team. And it really, it really shows and I think this project is going in a great direction, so, so thanks to everybody for all that and, and for getting us to this point, so.
My goodness, name is. Have a great day everybody.
Like they, the, the issue was, do we want the, do we want the large drink or the medium drink? They said, give me the large drink, the, the nine-and-a-half versus, is that right? Nine-and-a-half acres or something, I don't know.
The field size, so as we, as city manager, which I mentioned, this is kind of the, the big question for the night, is it seven-point-six or is it nine-point-five? So to, we wanted to ensure that the field size is appropriate for our community needs. We hired Johnson Consulting to, they, they are a company that provides strategic planning and develop, and development advisory services for convention, hospitality, sports, real estate industries. So we brought them in as soon as we could get them on board to help us have an independent, independent look at this to determine what the best sizing is. So they worked in the end with our, the rest of our design team to give us their insights. We brought them in to analyze the programming data from both the recreation programming, but also the private youth sports organizations and guide us toward the recommendation of what size would be appropriate for our use. So based on that marketing assessment, Johnson Consulting determined the following recommendations, that the local character, and this is from their demographic study, that our local character is prime for a high utilization in youth sports programming. With above-average youth population, that's the five-to-twenty-four-year-old demographic, there's been significant growth in youth and there's a strong market potential for high-level sports facilities. They also recommend the larger nine-point-five acre site will provide more fields and in turn allow for increased programming potential at the park. In addition, if more programming was consolidated at Deer Path, from other parks that is, the larger field layout will provide more field hours to be absorbed into the park, so less pressure on other parks. Johnson concluded that nine-point-five was the right choice in their opinion, and it isn't building excess, extra capacity beyond what the community can expand. They were pretty strong on that, they felt that nine-point-five was the right number for us. With that, I've asked Steve to come up and give you an overview on some of the layouts of these and it's both in, it's gonna start with seven-point-six and then go into nine-point-five.
Thanks Chuck and good evening mayor and alderman and councilman. So just to sort of build upon then what, what Chuck was saying regarding the, the fields and what Johnson Consulting came about, we're gonna go with you as a couple diagrams that show the difference between the seven-point-six and nine-point-six acre fields. So what we're really trying to represent here is the difference in flexibility that you have. While we're showing some specific layouts, these are by no means what you would be limited to, but these might sort of show sort of the wide ranges of what you could do from a standpoint of baseball, football, lacrosse, soccer, and other youth sports as well. And one of the other things that we came away with from the Johnson Consulting report was an understanding that some of the, the most primary uses that you might see are those in sort of the, the U-nine to U-twelve type multi-purpose sized fields. So you're gonna see quite a few examples that represent how those can fit across the different, different ideas. As some of you may know, north-south, while it might be a preferred orientation for field layout, when you're talking about, you know, sports in general and doing various games and practices, it's common to stripe them both north-south and east-west to get as much flexibility as you can. So you're gonna see combinations of those two types of orientations throughout these two field types. What you've got on the screen right now is the seven-point-six acre field size, and so you'll notice that, you know, sort of from top-left to bottom-right, all these are gonna be representing that the baseball fields would be oriented so that the infield's are toward the four corners facing inward, just like it is now. That provides a maximum amount of flexibility for how you can stripe and do other purpose, other multi-purpose fields within that sort of footprint. And so from your, what you're seeing here, you can get quite a few sort of U-nine to U-twelve multi-purpose fields, you can get a few large full-size, whether it's soccer, lacrosse, or football fields in this particular way. One of the differences you're gonna see as we switch over to the nine-point-five acre field size is while the, the baseball fields might remain the same, you're gonna see that you can start to get a, a larger number of, of your other sized fields striped various ways when you move to the larger footprint. The other thing that we'll note is a larger footprint that we're currently showing, and we'll talk about this a little bit further on the next slide, represents a concrete walk down the middle of that, which does not show up in the seven-point-six acre version because of the fact that the, the nine-point-six acre has more space where you can get that concrete walk in. We'll talk about what the benefits of that walk can be, but as you can see, even with that walk down the middle, you can still get a larger quantity number of fields and have more flexibility and sort of optimum field layouts with the larger field size as well here. The other thing to point out about the, the larger turf field footprint is that one of the things that you might notice looking back on the seven-point-six field layout is a lot of these layouts are tight, they're right next to each other, not just from the playing lines, but sort of what we call the run-out zone beyond that, where players can go beyond the line if they're chasing a ball, where you could set up players and fans to, for spectating and for operations. So in this, in this foot, smaller footprint, you have less space between fields to accommodate those type of operations. As you move on to the nine-point-five acre field version, while you can do a larger quantity of fields, you can also gain a little bit more buffer space so that you could have more operational space for those kind of considerations. So from there, we kind of move on to, you know, focusing on the main area that Chuck had mentioned. So although, you know, right now we're kind of showing on the screen the, the nine-point-five acre version, the nine-point-five acre is the turf space, that does not include the concrete walk, it's all the turf space that you have available in this footprint. Part of the benefit of the concrete walk is that it provides more ADA access, you know, from north to south, while the project would have the loop trail, just like you have now, a loop trail going around the perimeter of the field, you know, that's sort of a long way for people to go to get from the north parking area down to some of the south fields. So this is a much more convenient and accessible route to the various fields. It also provides you space to get accessible seating and player, player access, so if you are doing some striping of fields where people need to get to the center as opposed to the perimeter, it allows more ADA access for that, as well as setting up areas for player, for fans to, to view from there, so they're not just having to view from the perimeter or cross onto the field turf to view middle games, but they have central viewing areas. And lastly, the other benefit that you get with the central walk is it provides sort of a, an infrastructure corridor where you can now put lighting, so the lighting isn't just around the perimeter of the field anymore, but now you could bring it to the center and so you get a little bit more optimal lighting for those interior fields that might be played upon during evening hours. The other thing to point out on this too is, as Chuck mentioned, the shifting of this, so this particular plan does show that idea of this footprint shifted over to the east, which is why you're not seeing those additional amenities on the east side like the playground and the shelter area. By doing that, you can see the dark blue line in sort of the lower-left corner there, that represents the hundred-year floodplain, so we don't get completely out of it, but we get more, it's, it's, we get more of the field out of it than what's in it without the shift. And so that's important for two reasons. The, the more, the less that we are in the floodplain with the fields, especially since we need to raise their elevation to keep them out of that, sort of that wet zone, then we need, then we have more mitigation is required. So we need to do two things here, basically from a stormwater perspective. We need to provide mitigation for the fill that we're doing in the floodplain, which is the filling, the raising of the fields, and we need to provide stormwater detention. And we're accomplishing that through really three things throughout this plan. We're accomplishing some of that mitigation in actually the stone base that's underneath the athletic surfacing, as well as a little bit of the work that's happening along the Skokie River that Chuck mentioned where we're kind of taking what's already an eroded bank and kind of peeling that back a little bit and restabilizing it. Those two things get us some of the mitigation we need for having some fill within the floodplain. The stormwater is handled mostly through a combination of a little bit of the capacity that's also in the stone base, but also primarily what you'll see there on, you know, just directly west of the fields is that open basin area. And so by shifting of those fields, what you see is the dark green represents the basin limits approximately without the shift. You'll notice a bold black line that kind of represents the expansion that we can accomplish, so by shifting those fields east, we get more space on the west for more surface area for the detention. And that's what kind of Chuck alluded to, that without the shift, there could be a need for some, some under, some more expensive types of stormwater detention. Did you have a clarification, Dan? No? Okay. So those, you would still have those, so in this, what you're represented here is the, you get the nine-point-six acre fields, you get the central walkway, the loop trail path, then the surface detention to the west, along with some, a little bit of work outside the yellow box along the Skokie River for some of that mitigation we mentioned. You could see that in this particular diagram, the buildings are outside of that and that's gonna be something that Chuck will talk about when he represents a little bit more about the budgeting. But was there anything else Chuck you wanted me to mention on that?
Alright. Alright, thank you Steve. Alright, so we next want to get to the costs. So the project is again at fifty percent, I know I've said that a few times, but just to make sure you know that these are just estimates and that they could change. So the, the estimate for the seven-point-six acre configuration is eleven million dollars and the nine-point-five is an additional one-point-five for a total of twelve-point-five million. And again, this is shifted east, if we didn't shift it east, that nine-point-five would be potentially another two million dollars. So we felt it appropriate to keep this as a responsible amount. We, we were asked to start this project, we knew what numbers you had, so we thought it was reasonable to keep it at that level. The important thing to talk about now is what this does include and what it does not. So the turf products are included in this, that meet the evaluation criteria that I'm gonna talk about in a few minutes. And it's important to note that a lot of the products that we looked at do meet or answer some of those environmentally sensitive issues that were talked about. So they, they come at a cost, a lot of the technology is changing and we were pleasantly surprised with some of the things that are out there. So a little bit more on that in a moment, but just so you know that that doesn't, this price does include some of those products that do come at a higher cost. The second thing it includes is the elevated fields that I mentioned, that approximately one-foot lift to pull it out of the floodway, the hundred-year line, the walking path that goes around the entire fields is also included in this, site lighting is included, the dugouts, backstops, bleachers, scoreboard, safety netting, all of that is included in these numbers, sports and maintenance equipment, so things like the equipment that we manage or maintain the turf with, but also goals and things like that. And then the utilities for the three buildings that were mentioned previously, and then the west-site natural areas and detention improvements. So that's what's included. What's not included in this cost estimate are the building structures. We are going forward with the design of two buildings, the, the, the north and south bathroom, that was in the original contract with Hitchcock and their team, so that will continue, but those estimate, that is not in this estimate. And as noted above, we are putting in the estimate for having the utilities to those buildings in case it is deemed necessary or desired to put in those buildings. The second thing it does not include is improvements north of the field, all of those things that I've mentioned earlier with parking lots and domes and all that, of course, none of that is included in this. Other amenities, the playsets, as I mentioned, that is not included in this cost estimate, nor are the boardwalks or the trails on the west side in that natural area. It would just include. in that, uh, natural area. It would just include the measures that would make it, um, uh, suitable for mitigation of stormwater. Um, but it would be, it would include the native plantings and all of that kind of stuff, and some bank restoration as well. So that's what's included and what's not. Uh, if desired, uh, city staff could present, uh, menu, uh, for additional park items at a future city council meeting. We do need to have some direction on, um, which items you're going to want to go forward with. Tonight, we are only asking, uh, for direction so that we can move forward with design, and we're looking at the, you know, the, uh, 11 or the 12.5, uh, figure.
Yeah, I think also some of the ones that have opposed that are coming off council and so, yeah, I don't really care.
Yeah.
I've already created, I already made my mark and created a lawsuit in the city, so I'm okay. I'm done, so I'm gonna agree.
Well, if you're talking about Rummel, even she was on board, so I agree with it.
Talking about, I'm talking about the, the lawsuit aldermen.
Yeah, well, she's one of the lawsuit aldermen.
I know. And so was the other guy, and, you know.
But, you know, we couldn't, I'm going back to Rummel. We couldn't leave things well enough alone. Yeah, I agree with it, but let's just make sure there's no lead in that plastic, because I-
You know, I've also heard that some of these, uh, synthetic grasses are made with lead in the paint product that they use. So, um, and even small amounts of that are not safe for children to inhale. So I'm assuming the industry has moved beyond that.
Did you? Who said anything about lead? And then Preschleck, he comes back, he goes, yeah, and makes sure there's no asbestos in it either.
No asbestos either.
Uh, yeah.
Steve's gonna add to your-
Yeah, I mean, it's like, you know, the, the classic, she is just like someone who's not in the know or doesn't bother to educate herself, but yet it's gonna scream since she has a microphone.
Yeah. And then that dude from the Muppets came on, you know, one of the guys up in the balcony, what's his name again? The guy that came up at, at the public speak, he said, uh, that, "That turf is gonna be so hot, you're gonna cook bacon and eggs on it."
Oh, I didn't see that.
Paul Hammond, lifetime resident of Lake Forest. I read the 34-page research report on turf prepared by a Big Ten university. They had four main points. One, risk, increased number of heat strokes. Two, turf temperature is 55 degrees hotter than natural grass. Three, Penn State measured a surface temperature at a local field at more than 174 degrees Fahrenheit. You can fry an egg if the surface temperature is more than 158 degrees Fahrenheit. So the surface temperature of the turf is hot enough to fry bacon and eggs. The Consumer Product Safety Commission recommends that water heaters have a maximum temperature of 120 degrees Fahrenheit to prevent burns. The plumbing codes limit hot water temperature available to residents at showerheads shall not exceed 110 degrees Fahrenheit to prevent burns. The guidelines are not to use plastic fields when the surface temperature are above 120 degrees Fahrenheit. Since every Deerpath Intermediate student in the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grades will be exposed to the turf field in gym classes, you better have every parent sign a waiver indicating an increased risk of heat stroke and that the temperature of the plastic field has been measured by research scientists at over 174 degrees Fahrenheit. For safety reasons, the professionals have cooling fans on both sides of the turf field because of the excessive heat. They have oxygen tanks on both sides of the turf field because of the excessive heat. They have licensed medical doctors on both sides of the field because of the excessive heat. Ice and drinks available for all the players. Any city council member who votes yes for the expenditure for turf fields better make sure that the city liability insurance covers you for the next 10 years or the life of the turf, whichever is longer, because when the first heart stroke case occurs, I'm sure the parents are gonna indicate that they never knew of the excessive heat risk or that plastic fields generate that much heat, or that the field temperature may exceed 174 degrees Fahrenheit. Since this is now on video, when you're subpoenaed, you will not be able to deny knowing the facts. You will be deliberately subjecting young children to temperatures measured by a respected Big Ten research university at more than 174 degrees Fahrenheit. So for the turf fields, any team playing on it will not only have to hire a referee, but you will be required to have a licensed doctor for safety reasons because of the excessive heat and obtain oxygen tanks and cooling fans for each game like the professionals. Finally, all this excessive heat from the turf fields add to global warming and climate change. Chicago Cubs play on natural grass. Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah. He's, that's the Muppet dude. And I guess he's gonna run for mayor or whatever. I don't know.
Oh.
Hans or-
Hammond?
Hammond? Hammond and eggs? He's gonna cook Hammond and eggs on the Astro turf?
Yeah.
He just comes up-
Keep, keep going against everything the city's trying to do, which is good for the community now and in the future, to see how, how long that's gonna, how many votes you're gonna get there.
I go, dude, number one, take your face three feet away from the microphone. He's like swallowing the microphone. I'm trying to listen to this guy.
Used to that.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be too hot.
It's like, I, I, I think some of the people who, the aldermen that are, were opposed to it, they're now coming on, not only are becoming done with their terms, but also they just don't have a leg to stand on. I mean-
Well, we had a crap load of water come through, and it's like, oh, yeah, I guess it does make sense. Really?
No, it's not even, it's not even the rain we got. It's the ineducated people, like those people that are opposed to it probably haven't set foot on that field. The only time they do that is on the Fourth of July.
Yeah. Well, they had a couple-
Right, that school used that field? Wow, wow, I didn't know that. Yeah. And you know what? The schools should, are gonna use it, and they should be paying for use of it, too.
Yeah.
Because they charge, they charge the rec and people if they want to use their gyms. So the school, yeah, they're gonna get a chance to use that new field for gym classes and all that, but you know what?
Scratch.
There's a fee for that. Yeah.
Well-
No longer can this be, you know, sure, everyone use it.
Well, it, it, public sentiment must be that, look, people may not want a homecoming parade, but they sure want that turf. Because if they're all on board.
I would prefer to the homecoming stuff, because half the people in this town don't even realize what homecoming is to do.
Yeah. Well, we're all newcomers, you know?
Evidently.
So that, that was, that was a good meeting.
Welcome all newcomers.
Thank you. When do I stop being, being a newcomer, Scoo?
When, probably when you stop saying I'm a newcomer.
Oh, all right.
You know, you've been here, what, five years now? Ah, you know, I'm new to the community.
Well, I'm just asking you as a old-timer, like, no offense, like, what, is it five years? Is that the magic number? 10?
There's no magic number. It's when you decide as a human being.
Oh, all right.
I'm, I'm not, you know, gonna call myself a newcomer and I'm part of the community. Ooh.
[laughing]
I am a resident of Lake Forest. I don't, I don't tag myself as a newcomer or an oldcomer.
Well, I guess when we give grief to the caucus and we say it's a bunch of newcomers, when is it, when are they not newcomers on there? When do we classify them? That's my point.
When, when they don't consider themselves newcomers and when they stop labeling themselves as newcomers.
Well, they just-
And, or-
But we're the ones labeled.
Flipping the switch, saying, "We don't need any old timers in the community on the caucus," because they don't know what they're doing. They're talking about preserving everything in the past.
Truly noted. Strong point, strong point.
But I think there's an underlying, well, you know, you mentioned the caucus. I think there's an underlying premise to be on the caucus that if you're, if you've moved in here prior to 2005, you're old.
2005, okay, 17 years is the mark.
Just, just looking at some of the people that are on there.
Yeah.
Their timeline, moved in.
Well, I guess-
You rarely see any old timers, as they say.
I don't think you call them old timers, and I think I'd call them babysitters, right? Adult in the room? Is that why Novitz is on there?
What, when, when, yeah. We need, we need one of the old guys on here to kind of, you know, connect the past and the present, make sure we're doing the right thing. So no one-
Right.
No one, uh, can say, "You're just a bunch of newcomers."
[laughing]
We have someone, an old timer now. Yeah, how old is Novitz?
Yeah, right, right.
At Lake Forest.
Well, you know, can he be alderman again?
Just, just saying. I'm sure he could. I'm sure he could. That kind of defeats the purpose of volunteerism in Lake Forest, and we keep recycling the same people.
Uh, I haven't heard anything about, uh, any new mayors coming up. I did hear them-
Interviewing. I think they narrowed it down, didn't they?
Well, I heard Pruitt's name quite a bit at that last council meeting.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I, I would bet, if I was a gambling guy.
Yeah.
I would throw my money. I keep hearing her name, too, especially like at that last.
We'd like to thank-
She's gonna be the, uh-
True. True for you.
Uh, the group that we have put together for this project has lived up to some of the lofty expectations, uh, and accomplishments of past groups, and is a testament again to the Lake Forest way of doing things and planning in a thoughtful and long-term way for projects of this magnitude. And so I see our chair of the advisory group, Prue Biedler, is in attendance, and, and so I just want to, on behalf of the city staff in particular, thank her and the group that she, uh, so successfully led in helping get us to this point.
Alderman Weber.
Thank you. Um, first I want to say just a huge thanks to Chair Biedler.
I want to thank former Alderman Biedler for her work and working as a cohesive unit.
Thank you. I also want to start with thanking Prue Biedler.
Alderman Rummel.
Uh, thank you, and, uh, you know, Prue, you and I go back a ways, and thank you for this project as well, so, and your committee. Uh, you had a super committee.
Thanks, uh, to the staff, consultants, and to Prue for your committee.
She'll be, and she'll be good. She'll be the, uh, I think she's gonna be the caucus.
Yeah.
Recommendation.
Is, uh, Rummel gonna, is she gonna do Rogue?
I don't know. You know, she sure seems like she wants to, but I'm sure, you know, she doesn't get it. I'm, you know, she'd have to talk to her.
Well, I'm sure they're-
She talked to her PAC and all that stuff to determine if it makes sense financially.
Well, yeah, the budget. I'm sure she had a heck of a budget for lawn signs.
Oh, she's got, she's got a force behind her. So.
Yeah.
I'm sure she'll, I don't think she'll go quietly in the night, but you never know.
Okay, all right. So right now it's Prue.
I think. It sounds like it.
Prue for you, Scoo.
It just sounds like it.
Prue, 20, Prue and Scoo 2022. That's it.
How about the Bears?
You know, when, uh, Fields threw the first, the first pick, it's entertainment, you know what I mean? It's, it's like the stock market, you know, fantasy sport. Well, anything that a lot of people like to get into, I just get away from it, you know? It, I do fantasy sports. I like seeing the numbers. Um, I don't associate myself with, it's like, it's like going to a movie, you know? It's like going to a movie. It's entertainment. But I did, I did turn it on.
You played football?
I did. It was a business. I got my school paid for and that, you know, got, got my fake joints and split. So it's a business. But I saw Fields throw that first pick. I go, and then I turned it back on, and then there's, they're, they're wallowing around in the sewer water.
Right? See some of those gushers? Well, I was a ti, I was a typical Bear fan. I, I got a story. You'll love this one.
Yeah.
So I'm watching the game in the first half, just getting like, this is brutal. I feel bad for the Bears. They just suck. And on top of it, the 49ers suck. So, uh, Pam's like, "I'm going to the store. You wanna go?" I'm like, "Hell, yeah."
[laughing] You chose the store over the Bears?
Oh, it gets better.
All right.
So she's like, "Well, do you want to go?" Because we usually go up to Woodman's for the big hall in Kenosha. And she said, "Well, you know, we could, I don't know if I want to go up to Kenosha because it's raining and all this, but, you know, we should go over to the one in Deerfield." You know, since our governor was so kind to remove the grocery tax.
True.
Maybe we should go there, because we don't get taxes. I'm telling you, we go up to Woodman's in Kenosha, and it's like $300 of groceries, and it's like tax zero.
Yeah.
It's like, well, and, and the prices are much, much lower. Uh, so we go over to Woodman's, and we're going down Deerfield Road, past Deerfield, and it just frickin', and Pam's like, "We're driving into it." It's like, "Look at those frickin' clouds." It's like, I mean, it's like a black plume. It's all of a sudden, it's just like, whoa. And it's, I mean, I'm like, crap, I can't see.
White knuckle.
Oh, it was. And I got a truck in front of me.
You looking for a viaduct?
And we finally get there, and Pam's like, "Well, I'm not going in there." I mean, it's sideways, literally, and just sheets. I mean, it's hitting the passenger side, and it's-
Sideways rain.
Yeah, and then it's on my, on, on my side, it's just like a waterfall of water. I'm like, holy shit. This is, well, we'll just wait it out, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, so we're sitting there, and it's like, there's not a lot of cars, and I, and I parked like one row away from the entrance. So I'm like, "We're gonna make a mad dash." Nope, nope, I'm missing the rest of the Bears game. And then, of course, I get home, and they won. I'm like, "Are you kidding me?"
So Scoo, uh, you were telling me to reach out to Toadstool Pub, ask for Toad, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. September 24th, they got a gig with, the, the Mosquitos are in there. A band called The Mosquitos, jam band. They're pretty good. I know, I, I know them.
Where do they play?
Uh, they, there's probably a dozen of them in there. You'll hear some Grateful Dead, all that stuff.
[singing] Oh, we say, I'm worried.
You like that? You like that? You caught some of the sassols. I see that. Um-
That's like a mainstay song of yours. Doesn't matter who's in the band.
Uh, that's a part, we learned that like a week ago, and-
How, how did that go at MC Barrel?
Uh, we got paid, which is good. Sister opened up, which she should have been the headlining, but they put us up because they didn't want to stay up late. And then they liked what we were playing, so they stuck around anyways. Uh, it was good to get the rust off, you know? I think C-plus perform, nah, C, give it a C. Uh, the bass, the bass player definitely needs work, but, uh-
Really? I heard he is a chick magnet.
[laughing] I did get a $20 tip.
Whoa!
What?
I got three sparrows or whatever the term, fighting outside my window.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's fighting.
On the screen.
I don't think that's fighting.
I know. G-rated.
Oh.
Wow.
So I got, I got a $20 tip. Uh, yeah, it was very, that, well, I think I got was like a, a, a 10 spot, but 20, that was, you know, that was nice. So it was a good show. And then the, the Mosquitos were there, and they're also playing-
That's, that's nice of Maureen.
Wasn't Maureen, and I was kind of nervous there for a little bit.
Your sister?
No, it was a, it was a first-time customer that was there on their first day.
On-time listener.
Uh, and we played a couple slow songs, so they were able to dance, and that's when the money came in.
Did they, $20 bucks this way?
Uh-
They put it in the-
No, this thing was folded up about 20 times. But then, you know, you give it to the sound guy, so it's, so it was good. It was, it was good, and then, uh, getting back-
Where's the next visit? I don't like, we got much. Where's the next sassold?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think, we gotta, I gotta, I haven't talked to Toad yet, but I think we start with a listener party, September 24th. September 24th, the Mosquitos are playing. I will be there. Anybody that shows up, I will make sure they get a drink. And I might have some koozies that I gotta move along, because it's getting a little cooler in the, in the year. So we'll see who shows up.
Hell gate.
Eight, eight PM, September 24th. Toad, if you're listening, which I am sure you are, Mosquito's great band. Jeff Pike, great drummer, the whole, the whole crew is good, so we'll see you out there.
Is our staff hole gonna kind of show up for, uh, you know, open mic type of thing?
Uh, no, I don't think that, uh, people don't like, unless it's house equipment, people don't like to, uh, they don't want other people touching their stuff, you know what I mean? So that's it, that's a good thing, but it was good.
Have baseball travel?
Uh, I don't like people touching my bass either, that's a pretty, pretty funny. Lot, lot better people at the play. And then, uh, Ellen Sterling, 100 years. What a great time we had at her, uh, her event Thursday, huh? Here, here's a picture of us there drinking beer and having cocktail weenies. What a great time. Some say I was overdressed, uh, but.
Not for there.
No, good for them, good for them. Uh, Ellen, uh, good, good for you, 100 years. Um, and then how about the Queen?
Oh, I know. You know, the funny thing is, it's too bad that, uh, she, she, uh, moved along before Ellen got on, because I think I, I saw in Ellen's thing, they did a dress display of 70 years honoring the Queen, 70 years of dresses in the window.
Before she passed?
No, after.
Oh, after, okay, I says, that's good.
And I'm sure she even probably met the Queen in her travels.
Well, 100 years and met a couple Queens and then, how about that Charles?
I'm talking of England.
Yeah, that, that Charles, he's a miserable sort, isn't he?
I don't know him personally.
I just saw how he was treating his staff when he wouldn't even touch a piece of paper to move it over, he's kind of shooing, you know. Whatever, whatever. So, rest in peace, Queen.
King Charles Cavalier. Is that where they got the dog? King Charles Cavalier?
Is that the name of the dog?
Yeah, it's the name of a dog. Did I tell you about the lady that hit my mirror, on my driver's side mirror?
At Woodlands?
Grocery, at Woodman's?
Is it Wood, Woodman's or Woodlands?
Woodman's.
Woodman's, okay.
I highly recommend going there. They got some great food there.
Well, they also.
But just FYI, it's not as inexpensive as like going up to Kenosha. Kenosha's worth the drive. Paying a bunch of money.
Well, we got a lot of, uh, uh, support from Kenosha, which is kind of crazy. We got very little support from Lake Forest, but Kenosha loves us and, and Waukegan, just saying, guys.
What, what do you think, what do you think of the impending rail strike that's supposed to be happening this week?
I've been hearing about that for a while and I think, uh, I guess you could go to the days of Harry, Harry Truman and then after World War II, there was quite a bit of, uh, strikes going on, so.
I mean, these guys can be parking trains on crossing gates and all that where you can't drive over them. I mean, what's, what's going to happen there?
I think at the last minute, something's gonna happen.
You think?
Yeah, I do, because that, it didn't get any worse than when Harry Truman went through all this and I think that, uh, they, they'll learn their lessons at the last minute, we'll get a deal done. And if it does happen, it won't be more than a couple of years.
Why the last minute? Why not just get a deal done now?
Uh, leverage. I'm not a professional negotiator, I'm just saying.
Two unions, right?
Yeah. So we got that going on and then, uh, SIU's playing Northwestern this, uh, Saturday. SIU had some high hopes and not so much anymore.
They're all going to Libertyville. Ooh, our tribal, our tribal.
Homecoming, but nobody cares. I will try to watch it.
That, that, people do.
Yeah.
People do care. Let's not say people don't care.
Oh, alright, just not as much as they used to. Go, uh, go Scouts. Go Scouts. Here, let's give the hacks to Libertyville.
There used to be a Smoke'em Award, but, uh, a rivalry award, but that was discontinued for some unknown reason, too. Wayne Whitmore Smoke'em Award, no longer. Libertyville.
Smoke 'em, smoke 'em if you got 'em, like.
Wayne Whitmore was a coach, football coach for Lake Forest and Libertyville and they created for years the Wayne Whitmore Award, Smoke'em Award, goes to the winner of this game. Unfortunately, that was discontinued too.
So was there a trophy that was passed back and forth?
Yeah, there was.
Who's got the last one?
Uh, I can't remember, but I think it was, it was discontinued in the early 2000s and I think it was all tied to, you know, competition. We don't want to, we don't want to, you know, create.
Hurt my feelings.
We want everyone happy.
That's the problem. I think that's when the homecoming stopped, the parade stopped.
Probably, no, I think the parade stopped later than that, earlier than that.
You know, the mayor of Lake Forest, the mayor of Libertyville could have like a bet on, uh, you know, a Gerhards, uh, suite in, uh, Libertyville, uh, what's Libertyville? What is Liberty, Subways?
No, Libertyville's a great town. They have tons of restaurants. Ever been there?
They do, yeah, yeah. Uh, O2, um. Not O2s, but, uh, god dang it. Obviously not enough, not enough. Or maybe if we play there, still maybe. We thank you for listening and watching the Lake Forest Podcast. Lake Forest Podcast is supported by viewers and listeners just like you. Shark Guy Beach Fishing is a premier South Florida beach fishing experience out along Boke, Florida. Their world-renowned captains not only put you on the fish, but to help you and your family make a memory of a lifetime. Check them out on Facebook or at SharkGuyBeachFishing.com to schedule an outing. Shark Guy is your guy for your next charter. We'd also like to say we're thankful for our Patreon supporters. Reverend Luke Beck from the Church of the Holy Spirit. Matt A, Elizabeth C, Coastal Lance, Otto, RDM, Johnny C. And we'd like to thank the Breakfast Club of Lake Forest, Captain Mike's in Kenosha, Wisconsin, the Brat Stop in Kenosha, Wisconsin as well, the Frog Lounge in Waukegan, Illinois, and then the Greentown Tavern in Waukegan.